Is everybody set? Eric, you're gonna go?
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, good evening to everyone. Call the Montverden Council meeting to order, August 6th. Montverden Council meeting to order. I'm not aware of any changes to the agenda that we have in front of us. We'll entertain a motion.
Do you approve for agendas presented?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries. Next item is communications. Anybody that would like to address the council? If so, please step forward, name and address, please.
Cliff Weaver, 1602 Palisades Road. I received communication from Matt Siders in regards to a school bus parked on my property. They also sent a copy of the ordinance. As far as I can see, the school bus would fall under the recreational vehicle portion of the ordinance, so I would assume that I am in compliance. Another note, I've had goings-on with Matt Siders ever since early this spring. I cannot get Matt to return my phone calls. I cannot get Matt to communicate with me, and I would like to have some other force to take to resolve the issues that I have if there's someone other than Matt that can help me. I've stopped at the city office and left messages for him during the day. This spring, one time, I was even disgruntled, and the officer on duty noticed that upstairs, and by him stopping me, found out what the situation involved, and he tried calling Matt and leaving a message to have Matt get ahold of me. And at that time, we had a discrepancy on a driveway to the rear of my property off of Highway 30, which is a drive given by the Department of Transportation off of Highway 30. They have record of that. Once Matt was informed of that, that's when Matt stopped communicating with me. So I don't know if that's the problem or what, but I would like to resolve any issues that I have and be in compliance. Been a member of the community my entire life. I've lived in this town my entire life. I support the town, I support the school, I support the fire department. I love this town, and I do want to be compliant. I just want to know why I can't get a response and who I can talk to.
I'll make sure you get a response, Mr. Weaver.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it. I just, I need help working through this.
Well, that's what we're here for. You'll get a response.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
By the end of this week. Is there anybody else I'd like to address, council? Mr. Booth, please.
Guy Booth, 71767 in Moore. I'm here for something else, but it's been a long time since I've heard anything from the city as to what you're doing on establishing a quiet zone at 8th Avenue. I'm reminded of it daily as we try to, I try to talk to somebody on the telephone in my house, and I have to say, "I'll have to call you back," or we try to eat dinner on our front porch, we know we have a lot of interruption. And I think this happens to a lot of people. I've seen the city be progressive in many things, purchases that are made, infrastructure that's taken care of, and I look at this as really a substantial economic development issue. Properties have lost value, we've checked this out with realtors. Just getting these properties back to full value will pay for this in just such a short order through the increased tax revenue. So it's not that you're not doing something, it's just that the public doesn't know what you're doing. So if you could just give some update either to the paper or some other way to let us know, are we still on course for getting to Quiet Zone 8th Avenue? That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
I can, real quick. So, right now, Quiet Zone Technologies is updating their original report because the engineers for the railroad have changed from the time that the original report was issued. Once that is complete, then it'll be back in front of the council. There was some question with the new engineer requiring additional safety mechanisms that are already there, so that's why Quiet Zone Technologies was rehired, basically, to update that. So once that's updated, then we can move forward with the new engineer for the railroad, and you'll see a lot more on it, but we're just waiting for that report. And they were just given the go-ahead about a month and a half ago to get the report updated, so.
Thank you very much.
Dave's here, though, if you might have more information.
Please, Dave.
We met just over a week ago with the railroad and Quiet Zone Technologies. Robert was in town. We had our coordination meeting, which is our first step, so we had to get all the parties together, talk over the recommended improvements in order to get compliance with the Quiet Zone crossing. That's been discussed and documented now. We have to issue a notice of intent, but we want to get the plans updated based on the discussions we had at that meeting. There were some things that they wanted to see on that, and they wanted to have that issued to the railroad as part of that notice of intent. So we are moving forward with it, working on trying to get that drawn up, so we can get that submitted. And I think it's going to be a fairly lengthy process to get established, but we are moving forward with it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Right, so no one? We'll move on to consent agenda, approval of council minutes, July 16, 2018, approval of liquor license, Palisades Cafe, and Big Point, Chris Clarkson to the Housing Commission.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries. Thanks to Christopher Wollingtearing, time for the Housing Commission. Next item is public hearing. Public hearing for the consideration of ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Montverden, Iowa by adding a new subsection, Chapter 92.11, reduction in bills for water and sewer service. I would now open the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to comment on this? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and move to F1, ordinance 86.18A, and ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Montverden, Iowa by adding a new subsection, Chapter 92.11, reduction in bills for water and sewer service. Chris?
So what you have in front of you is the original ordinance as presented during the discussion item. There were two issues that the council brought forward with the ordinance. The first was what constituted a mechanical failure. The attorney did not speak to the mechanical failure, so Dave and I were both on vacation last week. We will get together between now and the second reading to actually define what mechanical failures would be, so that there isn't any question if somebody were to step in the office. The second had to do with the verbiage next monthly bill, and the attorney gave almost a two paragraph response in leaving it as the next monthly bill. Making sure that we define a timeframe and not locking ourselves into a timeframe that we can't meet. So with that being said, this is, again, the ordinance that you reviewed prior to, and I'll answer the questions if...
Any questions? Any questions? Anyone want to take a motion?
I do want to point out, real quick before you take it, I did send this to Mrs. Bowers, the ordinance, so that she had an opportunity to read it.
Can you comment back?
Yeah.
No, she did indicate that she was going to be here tonight before I left on vacation, but I haven't heard from her today, so I will probably, she's the president of CDG now, so I will probably reach out to her and just kind of remind her that we have two more readings for this.
I don't have any more opportunities.
I will, I'll move to approve ordinance number 8-6/2018A.
One second, Dave. Comments? No comments? Roll call, please.
Wes?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Rod Bush?
Yes.
Queensland?
Yes.
Alright, next item, motions for approval, consideration of claims list. Do you have the most updated or in front of us?
Move to approve the claims presented with all street list.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries. Next item, I have to discuss the consideration of setting up public hearing date for an ordinance amending Chapter 121, cigarette permits of the Montverden Municipal Code.
Both of these ordinances were suggested through Iowa certification, and they're due to changes of the state law this past year, so we get a report annually on changes from state code, and then they give suggested updates. They did provide three. Speaking with Chief Shannon, these two would need to be updated, one or the other, so we just chose to have Iowa certification put them together, of course.
Okay, so on the cigarette permit, what was the change, the June 3rd?
So I will send you what, how 12105 currently reads. The issue has to do with, I think on the expiration of the permits, that last sentence as well. It's just verbiage changes, nothing significant.
Want to take a motion? There's no other questions?
So the motion is just for the public hearing?
Set public hearing date for the 20th.
And I will make that motion to set the date for public hearing as our next meeting Monday, August 20th.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries. Next item, discussion consideration of setting up public hearing for an ordinance amending Chapter 62, general traffic regulations of the Montverden Municipal Code. So we have basically the same.
Yeah, this is an add, so there's currently a 143, this would be 144. And it's obviously texting and using mobile phone while operating personal vehicles.
Doctor, you have any comments?
This is just to bring in with the updates to the Iowa code and making it illegal to use your electronic devices, bringing that into city code as well. A lot of times we do our traffic enforcement, enforce that under city ordinance rather than state code, handle through our city attorney and stuff like that for something that's in your court. This just brings that in addition to that code as well.
Background question, the service that we provided or that we paid, just bought into a month or two ago, did you agree to all our policies, and these are the only two that came up?
No, 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 this is a... Separate. Yeah, this, the service that we contracted with Lexaphol was for policies and procedures for the police department. This is related to the city ordinances. Completely different.
They just happen to deal with the police department for these two.
Thanks for clarifying. Goodbye.
Any other thing from the previous one?
Yes, I'll suggest that we set a public hearing date of Monday, August 20th.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries. Next item, discussion consideration of local Montverden sign construction and location.
This is being proposed by CDG, and it's on the retaining wall. Would be Jim Engelbrecht's property via the city parking lot or former alley. Typically, these are exempt signs, but because this is being used as kind of a wayfinding device, we wanted to bring this back in front of the council. It's not a sign that's typically visible from any right-of-way, per se. This will be if you park and utilize that space, you'll have a big map essentially. It'll be on every retaining wall. I do think it fits in with Montverden in general, it's just kind of an...
I was at the CDG meeting when they discussed this, and one of the questions came up was, what if the businesses change, you know, change names? And I know that the intent is to make it such that it would be easily revisable.
And so it will be done quickly. You know, as opposed to my questions?
But I think that's a great idea.
We are spending a fair amount of time with the downtown businesses that are located off of 1st Street. We had an issue with sandwich board signs, and we kind of placed it back into CDG's hands as to having communication with all the business owners, so that it wasn't necessarily mandated by the city. We're asking the businesses to come up with some ideas. So wayfinding sign like this, we've also looked at signage that is prevalent in Wisconsin, where it's individualized city signs that actually have business names. They're utilized quite frequently in smaller Wisconsin communities, so more to come on that, but this will be our first step in trying to help those businesses that are located off the main street to get noticed.
Thought, I didn't mention this before, I didn't think about it at the time, but I wonder if this sign were to have a QR code or something on it, so that people could capture it. Of course, they could take a picture of it, too, but you know what I mean? When they walk away from it, they're going to lose the map. Just a, just a thought.
Yes, I think CDG would be over then, anything along those, add significantly to cost.
So signage design is something that is going to be replicated other places in town or on Main Street or nearby, and does it need to be vetted by other companies, or has it been? Is this a first step in a multi-step scale of...
Most of the signage of this nature, and you have another one on here as it relates to the mural for Sing Along Bar and Grill, we don't have an established criteria, basically, for any of this. They're considered exempt signs as long as they don't advertise, and in this instance, it's wayfinding, so they're not advertising, per se, so according to the definitions, but... Yeah, I honestly, I think on the door, on the south side, we could potentially see replicated signage of this nature. Obviously, the mural is already on the retaining wall where this would potentially be, but I could see us trying to incorporate some signage back there with some of the alley improvements, when they use it as part of hiding the dumpsters and things of that nature. So yeah, I mean, to answer your question, I do believe that this could potentially be replicated, I just don't know for certain yet.
Do we know when this will be done?
I don't, Matt didn't.
Soon?
Oh, yeah, this year, if only.
Yeah, this year.
And I don't remember, is CDG funding any part of it, or is it all just your own part?
No, it's CDG that's, I don't believe Jim was having to pay for anything as far as it relates to the sign, but I believe CDG is paying for the sign.
The sign itself. I think it's great, anything that will help people find to businesses, don't do that thing.
Will you take a motion? There's no other questions?
Do you need a motion? Do you want a motion?
For this one, we do, for the next one, we don't.
So I move to approve the CDG presentation of the sign used on Engelbrecht property as presented.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries. Next item, discussion consideration of mural proposal for Sing Along Bar and Grill. Again, as Chris mentioned, this one does not need a motion, this is just more of a FYI than anything.
Yeah, so the city's kind of established a precedence of bringing these murals in front of council, so they're aware of when they start getting painted. The current mural, the latest one, I know it is petent now, it is...
Have you seen the sign?
We've made significant progress over the course of the day today. This has been through HBC, and I included that, their reports in there as well, so beyond that, like I said, it's just kind of an FYI. If you have any questions, you wanted us to pass along to the home or the building owner?
No, I'm excited about it.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
Things like that that make Montverden cool. I saw on radio, this is three or whatever in a year.
Getting more and more of them, yeah. Alright, so no questions, concerns from council? Alright, move on to discussion item, Nature Park Trail. Chris? All right, Matthew, with others?
I've got Dave here as well, so you asked staff to go back and have, let them look at alternative routes as it relates to Nature Park Trail, and so what was provided to you was a report from Matt, as it's laid out, kind of a parking rec reasoning behind their options, and then, of course, Matt giving those options to you, and then a price breakdown. So with that, Matt and Dave are both here to answer questions. This is a trail that was in the CIP, so there is funding available to construct some form of this trail.
Far away, Matt.
Yeah, I think you'll notice in your packet, there was a couple of extra maps and charts and stuff, so just deal with the one, the one map.
Okay, good, you're making...
And the one pricing. I was on vacation, Marcia had made some copies and made extras, so apologize for that. The one with the pricing, the number, the one at the top that says third, that's the original plan, the one that's priced at 98.5 on the construction total. So that was the one that I brought to you several months ago for consideration. Per your recommendation to go back and look at a couple of other options, we asked B and K to come up with those options the best they could, and these are the two options that they created. Partner Rec Board discussed this at our meeting two weeks ago, and felt that option A was the option of choice over option B, and knowing that there was a little bit of contention with the original trail, and for reasons in the memo is what they stated. Option B, they just felt it was too close to the current existing access drive and road, so they felt that that was not a good use of tax dollars for that trail there. With the disc golf course being in conversation, of being sort of in the way or being where it is, we talked about ways that we could possibly manipulate that into different areas that we can move that disc golf course whole, that's affected by that trail, option A. So we felt comfortable with looking at that and considering that. With that said, the only concern that really is out there is the trail extending on the fourth to go to A Avenue, or excuse me, B Avenue. I have some pictures here that Dave brought that he's taken that shows that area, if I may approach. So you'll see a tree, meadow area, kind of growth there that's going to be impacted by that, if it was created there. There, I believe, are two, two or three homes along that road that are going to be affected.
Is that where the trees are, within the right-of-way?
They are extremely close to the right-of-way, they'll be...
Are they within the right-of-way or on private property?
Uh, I want Dave, Dave, do you know?
Both.
Both.
The trail would run in the right-of-way?
Yeah, because...
And the trees that would be disturbed would be trees that are in the right-of-way? Is that right?
And, and on, and on property.
Well, I'm just trying to get very clear answers, because...
Some of the vegetation is actually on the right-of-way, so I went out and took a look at it. Some of the vegetation is on the right-of-way, and the other vegetation that's on property, personal property, would at least probably have to be trimmed back, but may not have to be removed.
Right.
Depends on...
So that's to conform with, you know, keeping sidewalks clear.
Correct. The question really becomes about the construction, so how much space do they actually need during the construction would dictate how much vegetation has to be removed potentially on private property.
And the opportunity for construction easement is very minimal, as you can imagine with that vegetation being on the property.
These three homeowners been notified?
No, you'll notice in my memo, I did not contact them, I didn't want to stir the pot, per se, just not knowing if that's a viable option that council would like to pursue. I can definitely look at that and get back to you. There's no decision obviously being made tonight, we're just making you aware of the options.
But both A and D go through that?
Correct, they both lead up to that, they link up to that area, correct.
Yes, for the original option, those homeowners were, we did have discussions with those homeowners, some of which were at the original meeting. We have not discussed anything with homeowners that would be affected by option A or option B until we knew whether or not the council would like to further pursue one of those options over the original.
I kind of liked the original one at the very get-go, I didn't realize there was that much of a difference in pricing when you looked at the other two.
I'm not having to relocate hikers and stuff like that, because that was one of the savings here, wasn't it?
There's additional length on the first as well, the first option, because it actually crosses the avenue and continues. We're going to take it all the way to, past the alley to the intersection, so there's more concrete associated with that option, but...
What is in the fog right now, man?
Just outside the head, there's over 150,000 in there right now. I believe we, I'll have to back and look at CIP, but I thought we were at 120.
120 was, was, yeah, for the local office sales tax year. No, I think it was 100 for the trail for last, this one.
And what was your, what's your reason for A over B?
A over B, well, Partner Rec Board discussed that, you know, option A obviously follows the comprehensive trails plan where it goes through the park and leads up to the 4th Street. There's a cost savings, obviously, with option A over the original. The disc golf course now, we can modify that, so it's not, doesn't come into play. That was one of the concerns we had going through the trail, or going through the park. And then three homeowners are affected as opposed to five.
I think one of the comments that I... I think one of the comments that I high-hat on the Partner Rec Board, too, is the fact that option A stayed closer to the street. As we're talking about having an opportunity for kids to basically funnel them to the highway one access, keeping them closer to the streets probably more in sight versus having them meander back through the park was kind of a concern of theirs. So that might have swayed at least one of the members somewhat. But they wanted to, their comment to me was, wanted to keep them as close to the street as long as they could, even though there isn't heavy foliage in nature park and in block three, but there's fairly wide open spaces, I mean, it's fairly visible. But, you know, social media being what it is, I think everybody's a little bit on edge right now in trying to keep the kids invisible as possible for as long as possible.
Yeah, option A still allows for that need for a sidewalk trail along Third there. So that was another, I think I mentioned that in my memo. That was another main reason.
It also addresses the memo that we were sent from Scott Peterson, who lives across the street from there, correct? That, you know, he just sees so many people walking in that street. And I was there last weekend, walked through, and I was thinking the same thing, about how many people would take off of that street to have that trail run through, hopefully. Well, you're right.
So it's a lot of people walking on the street with nice sidewalk right next to them?
That's a good point. But I'm hoping that, you know, this is going to be a lot wider than what we typically have.
Yeah, we're just trying to minimize the impact on the neighborhood.
Now, usually, you know, we've got parents and scrollers that are going to choose that, you know, the ground.
Well, you've got, you've got, you know, senior citizens traveling this path. You've got kids, you've got all different generations, so keep that in mind. Any other questions?
I think it, that's what I was going to say. I think it makes sense to approach those three owners.
We'll probably approach all six of them that are located there, just to let the folks across the street know the side of the park for them.
Yeah, that's true.
There might be some traffic flowing through there and so forth.
More than barrier.
Yeah, and then, you know, one thing to consider through the trails, money, through lost, it is very dark on this street. We could light it, we could have that up in as well, so I don't know if that's something we can put in the back burner phase two, but something to consider.
Well, present that to the homeowners and make sure that they'll be good with the lights.
Yeah, and that'll probably be somewhat of impact there, too, so...
Are you talking about actual lights or glow-in-the-dark chips on the sidewalk?
We'll get with glow-in-the-dark somewhere. I don't know where. Maybe not here, but actual lighting is what I was recommending.
And you're thinking this trail lighting, such as was installed on the nature trail vertical section, is also...
Probably not with the street lighting.
Yeah, I was just going to say, the street lights on Third are pretty good, I think. That'll take care of that section, but going more of the south, I think, might be an opportunity. Because, you know, the lighting that we have on the trail is down lighting. It's not, you know, it's not open-ended. It's downward lighting, so it doesn't expand.
So why don't we look at that, too, so we know where we're at in pricing?
Yeah. Well, and again, I was thinking it might be phase two, you know, but we can look at that as an option, an alternate, too.
Yeah.
If we save some money and have some left over?
That's fine.
Would be good to lay the conduit in when they're digging off.
Right.
It's a perfect time to get conduit in.
I'm wondering if there's any, if it would be worthwhile to discuss the point that was made by a citizen with regard to the lost fund intent. Trails versus sidewalks. If they recall that.
Yeah.
It's a wall for another.
Right. And Chris, maybe a place to start would be your interpretation of those purposes as different things within the lost funding mechanism?
Yeah, unfortunate part is, it all goes back to the original question and the actual lost funding. So whether or not the council intended, had a certain intent, or at least individual council members had intent when they put the question together, it's all about how the question was worded and the people voted. So where I recognize that comment, it's still open for interpretation, and we do consider six foot and above as trail. So our sidewalks are five foot wide moving forward, and anything above that is considered six foot. So we've started a precedence, at least with the past subdivisions, so anything over six foot is considered a trail, and the city maintains those. With that precedent being there, it would be difficult for us to not make that claim that those dollars can be spent on that. But I do understand, if you go back to the minutes, there's been a lengthy conversation about what should be used, and I would agree that, I think, the original intent that the council members ever present is to make some distinguishing. But you almost have to do that with the actual question itself.
Yeah, I think it's possible that somebody who may have straight position tailored the language just subtly to broaden its visibility.
Yeah, I mean, usually it's put together by either a bonding attorney or a city attorney, and the attorneys will leave it as open as they can possibly do that so that they don't give themselves, or have to defend the city in a manner that might put them at a disadvantage. So the language tends to be slightly more open.
So what you're saying is the key point here is the width of the pavement.
As far as precedence goes right now, our sidewalk ordinance is five feet. So anything that is five feet or less is considered a sidewalk. Anything five, six feet or above is considered a trail.
Yeah, well, I mean, I just, I understand, because I was involved in the second version of the trail, subcommittee, citizen, whatever, ad hoc. You know, there's a lot of people been looking for something to happen for a long time, since the nineties. We finally found a funding source within lost taxes. So now we've got ideas and passion, we've got money, and then it's spent on something that really kind of feels like a sidewalk. And so that just feels bad to people.
Yeah, I think the council could, as far as option A is considered, they can stop with the trail and go through the process of forcing those homeowners then to put a five-foot sidewalk in.
And I'm not suggesting any...
No, but I mean, that is an option to us. I think at least staff's philosophy is, in this situation, again, is trying to follow kids to the location that we want to in the most secure way that we can. And if that requires us to maintain a little bit more trail, then we do it. My preference, given Mount Vernon's layout, is to look, I would rather go this route, I would say, than try and move forward with, say, a complete streets program, because eighty percent of the streets in Mount Vernon aren't conducive to a complete street program. So if we can use individual sidewalks to funnel them to even slightly larger trails at six feet, I think might be what we have to live with. And then as we get into the periphery, we make some more distinction with the park.
Another question I wanted to raise was, you know, so we have this pool of lost money. There has been money available, especially like safe routes for school to schools, money, et cetera. I think some of those grants have been, you know, funded less, et cetera. But it seems to me that we should always consider getting grant money to match money we're spending on lost or trails within the city, right? It seems like you shouldn't even think about a trails project without, without searching for grants and maybe applying for a few, right? Because if you can get even thirty percent paid for with grants, right? It's just, it's matching, if you can do any project with matching funds, the hard part is it requires capital. Guess what? We have capital. So we should take advantage of matching funds. Is Michael's opinion?
I think if, also on the safe routes to school, if we were doing anything at the highway one intersection to improve on the stop sign that gets rolled out there, that would be a prime candidate for safe routes. You are correct in that they are significantly reducing the amount of money that they're putting in into that program. But they still are funding, if I'm not mistaken, they're still funding studies and certain projects. It's just harder to come by.
Oh, I just wondered.
But I will say that Heather started today.
I was just going to say, you have helped.
One of the things that will be on her plate is the, so as we start looking for CIP-type projects, you know, identifying and working with those organizations to try and come up with grant money. On the community wellness center, you know, Ben Bramman has filled that role significantly for us, just researching and then telling us when individual deadlines are coming. My goal is for Hillary to kind of fill that role for us as well.
Well, it's just a topic that I think I'd want and be passionate about. So just one last soapbox to stand on here, if you want to raise that.
Matthew, anything else? Do we have other questions?
Yeah, I think they had, sorry, always good. I was just going to add, I know in speaking with some of the county supervisors, it is part of their plan, is a long-term or a ten-year plan to connect southeast to your app. It's the kind of possible. So I mean...
Depends on which one you talk to.
Well, you're right. Mr. Olson doesn't want to talk to you.
And where the priority is.
Yeah, I do think that now that they go to three instead of the five, we'll see, I feel like we'll see a little bit more attention upon us.
You know, I just see that if that were to happen, that could be a nice economic boon for us. And I think that, you know, to Marty's point, if we can look for grant money to help us pay for these sorts of things, you know, if and when that happens, we're going to center ourselves on it better, because there will be a lot larger monetary investment. So it's just food for thought.
If I may, we did look at safe routes for schools as part of this portion of the trail, but we felt that that money would be used at the intersection in order to get to the school connection point. So that was another, that's just one other project that we're part of this.
Dave, what would be the likelihood that the state would be supportive of some sort of line at intersection, instead of a stop sign?
When you're dealing with the safety aspect for crossing, they're probably looking more at mid-block crossing than a line at intersection. They tend to shy away from the signalized intersection as part of that. We've looked at that in several communities, and that's what they're going with, is a mid-block crossing, which is just a traffic signal on either side with a desperate crossing. Push the button, you go across.
Similar to Solon.
Right, and that's one that we did, with safe routes money. So there are some opportunities out there, but as you mentioned, safe routes has kind of faded away. They've got a stadium infrastructure improvement program, except that they, basically, it's a big pot of money, and players in there determine how that gets assigned. It's pretty difficult for a small community, even as we get closer to that five thousand population, get our own seat at that table, it becomes a lot more likely that we can get some of that money. But we've been looking at that for other projects in town as well. So it's just a little difficult with the situation right now to try and get anything for safe routes type money. But then we do some other opportunities. We did one that we're looking at for trails, there's a few others out there, but certainly there are grand opportunities that we could look for.
Is that money dictated by MPO at all?
The, what is, what used to be safe routes to school? Yes.
Okay. So unfortunately, MPO is the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and we're not a part of that because we're not connected to Cedar Rapids. So we have less chance of getting that money.
We compete with former communities.
Everybody good? Thank you, Matthew.
Thanks, man.
Next item, so you, well, zoning code update, or Chris?
So you have the zoning code in front of you, more or less what I wanted to do and why this is a discussion item, is to give you a stop for two weeks prior to the set date. At the next meeting, you would set a public hearing date for September. So you'll have this document for at least four weeks before you're asked to vote on it for the first time, of course, it has to readings as well. So nothing particular to discuss, other than chatter, most of the areas that have been changed, highlighted.
Yes, well, all of them are.
So going through and scanning the proposed changes, planning commission has spent...
About over a year and a half.
Yeah. Uh, vetting this page by page.
I would say that, if not the vast majority, certainly the majority of the changes, which are certainly highlighted there, are primarily formatting-based, changing inconsistencies throughout your existing ordinance, changing the readability, the ease of use. We've added tables for the convenient lookup of all the bulk regulations throughout each district. Like I say, primarily, it was done to make the ordinance a lot easier to use than your existing ordinance, you're not looking up in one place and having to go look up in a couple other places. I think the biggest changes perhaps were the addition of a couple of new zoning districts and the elimination of one, your rural residential ordinance. District was almost exactly the same as your suburban residential district. So got rid of one of those. We added a central business district, which encompasses the historic main street area there. But like I said, primarily formatting changes. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. I understand you just received it today. The Planning and Zoning Commission worked on it with the help of myself and Matt, like I say, about a year and a half. At their last meeting, they held their public hearing recommending it on to you.
We made changes to accessory buildings.
Yes.
Changes to accessory buildings. We also covered fences on easements. Things like that that Matt and I have definitely been head-scratching on for the last two and a half years. So a lot of the verbiage changes Matt and I had personally ran into as we were trying to vet through applications. So I'll be excited for this to be completed. And then the work will start on the subdivided ordinance as soon as we get EDFs higher clear as well.
One real quick thing that stands up. You've got this in no case should garage be more than ten feet in front of the corresponding building, right? Oh, there, it's on about every page, at the bottom of each one. Thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, at the very bottom. There's a whole bunch of them. I guess that's put in there to, it's probably against snout nose construction, I guess, is what you'd call it. What I got a question about, what if the house is kind of a U shape? Where it's got a, where it's got an outcropping over here, and then it goes in, and then the garage comes out here? So now are you ten feet from that outcropping over here? Or are you ten feet from the main part of the house that takes up the most of it? Because people can make their houses in order to get that garage to get a little bit longer.
Right. The, the building face is defined in there, so it would be likely the, the building line, the primary building line, which would be the farthest out. It wouldn't be the in.
It wouldn't be, have anything to do with the house. It hasn't to do with the building line.
That sets the tone for the ten feet.
Right.
The front, the front building line. Just draw the line straight across to the frontmost point, and that's where you start.
That's where that garage, that's as far as it goes.
That's as far as it can go.
So you have to push your house back.
Yeah, but you can only push it so far back.
Because you've got a little deep lot.
Yeah, depends on what's on, but traditional residential will be a little different.
Alright, well, everybody has some reading to do.
And you'll find on the back, I believe, are the two maps as well.
Yep.
But they'll be discussing when...
When's it?
When you get it.
Thanks for all the hard work.
Yes.
Very much. Anybody else have your question comments?
Not yet.
Thank you, thank you, thanks.
Alright, now onto reports. In terms of mayor's report, something to really report, other than just a heartfelt thank you to Marty for all his years of service. He was my mayor, pro tem, quite honestly, because he was somebody that I relied on and learned a lot from when I was on council, so a deep heart. and learned a lot from while I was on council, so a deep heart thank you to Marty for all his years of service. I wanna make sure that was quite clear. Anybody else have anything in terms of council committee reports? Anybody have any? Chris, city administration's report?
Um, George, the crack ceiling is done, we did have a couple hiccups with the contractor this year in signage, we did have a couple individuals drive on the newly sealed streets seconds after the tar was put down, so.
So they got some free in their coat.
So we did, uh, we did have one individual, um, have to take their vehicle to Lynch Motors and have some tar removed, so I haven't heard anything specifically beyond, beyond that, but we have talked to the contractor, um, about future signage and just making sure people use alternative routes.
Is that our responsibility or the contractor?
Uh, the contractor. It's one of those situations though, that just the, the city would probably make it right, just because it's, we're talking about tires.
Right.
So how did Nick feel about that new material? I know that when I drove, drove over Second Avenue, which I do often, it did seem to be an improvement.
Um, you know, cautiously optimistic, I guess. I mean, uh, for a number of our streets, I will say this, we received fewer phone calls. Um, because it does look more like an asphalt mix when it's put down. Yeah, time will tell, you know, as far as getting through kind of a winter season on it, just to make sure that it holds up similar to any other seal code. But, um, for us, it'll be a great thing, just simply as we talked about earlier, that we have narrow streets, we have a number of streets that are not highly traveled, where seal code lasts longer than the, the standard seven years, um, in many situations, so I said cautiously, yeah, cautiously optimistic of the foot. But I did, like I said, I never seen any phone calls, so that's a plus.
How long are they gonna wait before, I know Nick said something, they're gonna wait so long to drive on it, and then they're gonna come in and sweep up the?
Typically a week to two, um, and the contractor doesn't generally do a mixed drive as we do, so. Yeah, I think the last time that we did the regular seal code was later, about a week and a half. Staff has been trained on the credit cards and can now take them too. So that and, um, moving forward, we'll be able to take credit cards at City Hall.
A big banner ad going across the city.
Yeah.
Ready for that?
You know, the, the community wellness center, uh, went through its second round of cost estimating and only increased by one point nine percent, given the tariff center sitting out there right now, that's pretty solid. So we're excited about those numbers, still kind of within our margin of error, I guess, as far as it relates to, uh, construction costs. UV disinfection project will get let hopefully this fall, with spring construction, we'll be dealing with that borrowing as well sometime through this fall, early winter, um, and prepping for that project. And of course, you got the zoning code tonight, so. Well, a couple other items, I, Council President Christensen asked about three things specifically, two of them have been addressed already tonight as it relates to the zoning code status, and then, um, we talked about the quiet zone before, so that project is moving forward. The other is the demolition ordinance, and a guy's already left, but, um, I did receive an email from him today that he hopes to have that to be by the end of this week, so.
We need to close that, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, he and I have, just, I've been waiting for that document, so as soon as I get it, I should take care of it. Other than that?
Just a thought, there's a tear in the cover of the facility at the golf course.
Oh, yes, there is.
I just happened to notice it the weekend.
So, um, the conversation, uh, that Alex and I have had, because we are going to spend, you know, a significant amount of money as a city on that, uh, complex, to dry and hold off, so as long as nothing catastrophic happens to it, the original thought is to remove it. So we're hopeful not to spend any money on it, um, prior to getting these dollars, so. If something does happen more significant than what the tear is originally, we'll have to spend some money to make some corrections, but, um, it would be nice to, to have the SRF loan funds available instead of spending zero money.
That sounds like it's been addressed.
Yeah, it's at least noticed anyway. We'll see if, whether they make your requirements.
When will you appoint? Vote on you?
At the next council meeting, would be, um, August twentieth, the council will have an opportunity to decide at that point whether or not, um, you want to appoint or go through the election cycle. If you go through the election cycle, candidates require sixty-five signatures to get on the ballot, and the last opportunity for them, um, you have to make a designation at least seven days prior to the close of when the papers have to be in, so I think, uh, Lynn County said the deadline would be August twenty-ninth, because I think September fifth is when they have to have their nomination petition paper written, and the twenty-ninth will be seven days prior to that, so.
That's to get on in November.
Correct.
So you're gonna have.
You don't have to have, well, you don't have, no, the last, if you make a decision on the twentieth.
Right.
They would have basically from the twenty-first all the way to September fifth.
Okay.
To get their nomination papers in. If you waited, the last day that you could basically make a, a decision to put it on a ballot would be the twenty-ninth in order to get on November, so they would only have seven days, they have to have seven days to get their papers turned in. So my suggestion to you would be to make a decision on the twentieth. She also suggested, obviously, uh, no offense to Marty, that while you're sitting here, uh, should not be part of the discussion, so that's why it's on the twentieth, the council, so.
Get out and talk to people, get them excited. Anything else? Anything else? No further business, may you stay on the journey.